Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Monday, December 19th, 2022. I have a few meeting announcements. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. And I want to apologize to everyone for starting so late. We are, it's our budget vote and we are filled with all sorts of amendments coming forward, amendment packets coming forward. Will the clerk please take the rule call?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye, I mean here.
We're in time.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations and in person, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you're able and remain standing for a moment of silence.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. And our next order of business is proclamations. We have one from Councilman Burgess to be read, to be presented.
I present, no? Does hereby commend the Pittsburgh chapter for its endless dedication and contribution and leadership development to the young, to the youth of the city of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, December 17th, 2022 to be Jack and Jill Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve in a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved, thank you. And that moves us on to our next order of business, which is public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters that concern official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And the first registered speaker I have is Malika Porter Moon McCaffey. Is Malika on? Is Malika online? No. And not in the audience. Okay. Our second speaker, our next speaker is Bill Schlachter. Bill's online. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Councilwoman Teresa. I have a brief comment on the capital and operating budget. I just wanted to note, previously, there was discussion around how to use a million dollars. Should that be used towards street lighting or should it be used towards medical debt? And I wanted to really touch point on this topic a little bit more. As a taxpayer in the city of Pittsburgh, when I think about a million dollars, I think about how can we make this expand in many ways? So, street lighting is an important, important local government operation. It provides, good street lighting provides additional savings for our community and it also provides safety. So many studies have shown out there that when you have two streets, one is the orange dim light, which are most of our city streets, and good white LED lighting, crimes are less likely to occur on the good, well-lit street. Why aren't we taking that million dollars and putting it into something that not only would generate a better, safer space, but additionally, it would allow for more savings? I would encourage the council to think a little bit more deeply about perhaps maybe taking the savings from that amount and putting it towards a fund for something like, say, medical debt. Medical debt is a really important topic that unfortunately impacts a lot of the citizens in our city. But there are also a lot of things that are impacting citizens in our city. For example, homelessness. I was taking a jog the other day on the riverside and there are homeless encampments. We could, we could be using that million dollars for combating homelessness or we could give it to the food bank. The question is why medical debt? That's a sort of a big umbrella for lots of individuals. And I would just think about, if I was, had a million dollars, how could I make that million dollar stretch the farthest? And I think good lighting would ultimately help as well in the long term. And why can't we ask some of our corporations or nonprofits like UPMC to put a fund together to donate towards better lighting? Say they could sponsor a bridge and that lighting? And then take that money and then put that towards combating medical debt or homelessness or better food security for our community? Thank you for your time and I hope that you consider this comment as you think about the budget moving forward.
Thank you. Have a good day. And our next speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen. Is she on there? Oh, Naomi's not online. And our next speaker in person is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Soover, Rainbow City, Arizona and Alabama. Everybody there, LGBTQ. Global Intelligence Society, US National Candidate for President 2024. Global Intelligence Society, Dot Org. My identity card has a rainbow over my head, but that does not mean LGBTQ. But I think sex, gen identities, complexity is, spectrum is a matter of fact. I founded Rainbow Enterprises in 1985 and it is not, I repeat, not LGBTQ. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council is the spectrum, a rainbow of individuals and institutions in Pittsburgh. Last week, the White House in Washington recognized the American Physical Society and American Chemical Society, I'm a member of both, focus on the spectrum. The White House was in rainbow colors. Physicist Isaac Newton, light is one and many. Chemists Bunson and Kirshoff, each element has its own rainbow, its own spectrum. That's where we get spectroscopy. The rainbow image is not owned by the LGBTQ individuals and institutions. The rainbow belongs to all of us. It is a universal human symbol. One, the city of Pittsburgh and the country of the USA, each is a Baca Ngizo, rainbow, Haza, of individuals, e pluribus unum, one like light, but many colors, national, ethnic, racial. But in my opinion, both Mr. Ganey and Ms. Kelsmith and her leadership show anti-diversity by favoring black over non-black African Americans in this city in policy, direction. Two, Pittsburgh city and USA country, each has los colores del arco, a rainbow, Espanol, of languages. The nine districts of the city and 50 states of the United States have many linguistic dialects, varieties, variants of one language, US-American English. And three, Pittsburgh and the USA are a Nigi, rainbow and Hongo, of religions, many religions, but one government. But both Mr. Ganey and this council do anti-diverse actions regarding religion, showing bias for the religions of Christianity and Judaism and bias against, in my view, the religion of Islam and other religions, most recently evidenced in the Warwick inauguration, 12 December 2022, prayers by Rabbi and minister. And four, Pittsburgh, Allegheny County and counties and cities across the United States have many voting systems, but they do not have a Reagan-Bogan rainbow, one way to do by vote, by voter verification. Ms. Warwick cannot prove that she voted for herself.
Our next speaker is Danielle Houston. Houston?
Danielle Houston.
Is she here?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, City Council members and staff. So my name is Danielle Houston and I am the Executive Director of Grow Pittsburgh. Grow Pittsburgh is an urban agricultural nonprofit and our mission is to teach people how to grow food and to promote the benefits that gardens bring to our neighborhoods. We envision a day when everyone in our city has the ability to eat and grow fresh, local, healthy food. We were founded in 2005 and we currently support over 100 community gardens, 50 school gardens, and operate four urban farms in the greater Pittsburgh area. We redistribute over 30,000 pounds of fresh produce, supply urban growers with over 20,000 seedlings annually. We also provide technical support to backyard and urban growers and offer workforce development opportunities to youth and adults. And I want to again call for the city to pass the Food Justice Fund that is on the docket for today to support grassroots efforts and help address food apartheid in our city. This is important to me because I know an investment into urban agriculture is a key tool to alleviate food apartheid and create sustainable neighborhoods. The Food Justice Fund will address the systematic inequities by investing in urban agriculture and food growing projects in our region. The Food Justice Fund will also give access to small, black and brown farmers for technical support, opportunity for training, growth, and workforce development. Thank you for hearing me. So thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. And that exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
My name is Amy Comparatore. I am in District One and 15212, Presley Street High Rise. I dispersed to the secretary and hopefully it was forward to the clerk and to all of you, an incident report. I had nine of them for, for all of you. I hope you got them. What that incident report is about is about an attack that was put on me this week inside the elevator at Presley Street High Rise. I have advocated for cameras with the Presley Street High Rise Management with HACP for a number of years now. I have done everything but begged and pleaded. I come to you because we, we have gotten some cameras for which I thank the powers that be for that around the outside, lighting as well. For the first time, I was able to actually go to my home at night and actually see the entire street. It was a very beautiful thing. Safety is a wonderful thing. The elevators that are outside, the, we have brand new ones that are literally outside the elevator, they take care of what's outside of the elevator. If I did not have my roller walker, I don't usually bring it here because it's really not that handicap accessible at this building. But if I did not have my roller walker with me that day, things would have been a lot worse. And I'm urging you in the meantime, because I know that we're also looking into replacing those elevators from the top down. I know Director Binion has, has that on his to-do list. I've talked to Mr. Coffey, our real estate asset manager over at Presley about this. But I, please, let's get some safety inside the elevators as well. One camera would be able to do that and deter the violence that happens in that elevator. So many other things. We've found people that have defecated, have urinated in that elevator, all sorts of things have gone on in it. I'm just asking to make my building a little more safe for everyone that's in the community. That building is at currently 98% capacity, which is probably the highest it has been in a very long time. I'm going to finish up on this. I noticed that there are, there are some things that we have in, in the current budget. I would ask you to consider for housing, for making actual affordable housing, the garden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium.
Hello, everyone. Hope you're doing well. Can't wait for Christmas. All right. My name is Joanna Demming. I'm the Executive Director for Fineview and Perry Hilltop Citizens Councils. I'm here today in support of the Food Justice Fund. I'm here because I'm tired of seeing my neighbors struggle to access food, walking up to two miles to get food, carrying heavy groceries. I'm here today because we need to make sure community voices determine where investment goes so that this food can be provided. The Food Justice Fund is called Justice Fund because of the focus on equity and getting resources and foods to communities like Perry and Hilltop and Fineview that have been left out of, of investment and advancement. So we need to prioritize people of color, communities of color, communities like Fineview and Perry Hilltop. And RFPs need, we need to wait before allocating any funds. This should be a transparent process. We need to create RFPs. They should be vetted by an advisory board that includes the community. Support funding this fully. And $3 million is just a start. It could seed future investment. It could make sure that you provide a model for how to increase food access that can be marketed nationwide. I'm also here because I'm tired of seeing the vacant and blighted buildings. I'm tired of seeing doors open wide and holes in roofs where people could be living and thriving. The cost of food and housing are tied together. You have an affordable place to live, you can get more food, you have affordable food, more money for rent. And while I'd rather grow the pie for both of these, I think that the land bank can partner greatly to address food insecurity by providing land for farming, by providing buildings for markets and other commerce. I think that the two are tied hand in hand together. I also want to support overall reinvestment in communities like mine, Fineview, Perry Hilltop, that have been neglected and left behind and we're so far behind. We have to reinvest, we have to start and we have to go deep and we have to go far. Supporting Fowler Park Pool, thank you so much for that amendment. Thank you so much for supporting the Cross Stross Parklet. COVID has showed us how important these green spaces are so we can gather outside and how important play is in community, being together. Also supporting and continued support for violence prevention. Bus stop improvements, we need more shelters, we need to improve our stairs, we need to improve our sidewalks so that people aren't walking in the street. So yeah, all these things, just thank you so much for all that you do and appreciate your support as you move forward this budget.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Please approach the podium. Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. Good morning. And to the last speaker, you spoke beautifully and I wish that I could speak just like she did. But sometimes when I sit and watch some of the things that's happening in here, let me just give you some of the examples of the reason why I come down and the reason why I'm angry at this council. I came down to City Council to speak. You stand around, last week, you didn't start till 10:40, but in your rules it said, if you don't start by 10:30, the meeting is supposed to be scrapped. Ms., the new council lady, not the newest one, but the last one, she stood, these were Jewish children, she stood and talked to them for about 10 or 15 minutes. Lord Roy even said about Whitney Street and some other street they need because of the cars. Now, when I first came here, I used to come here and the kids would come and I would walk over and talk to them. When Ms. Virginia, that Sergeant of Arms, I had went over and talking to the young boys from Beshear, she had came over and told me, go sit down. Now, the reason why I get angry and the reason why I keep coming back is Andy Gashma, I had went to Andy, I said, you know what, Andy? I was over there talking to the children and she told me to go sit down. And he was angry and he said, she has no right. And he was saying, this man put it in me that what I'm, what I am doing is right. Civil, this, I feel like this is my civil duty. You need to know what we need. How can you do anything if you don't know? You sit there and you know what your neighborhood needs. Okay, I don't want to go through that. I wanted to also tell you that I was listening last week and I forgot, 90.5 WESA, that radio station, they were having a fundraiser. I tried to call in and I couldn't get through. I was only going to give $5 a month and that way would have been something. But also, I want them to say goodbye to Maria. She had been early, one of the earliest, when I first started listening, I remember listening to her and how sweet she was. She would say, thank you for listening to us, unlike KDA where they bulldog you, you call in, they get to hog on at you. And I had said, oh, I like this radio station, they appreciate people calling in. I used to, didn't mind coming down here to City Council. Listen, I know I'm getting old. I am 76 years old now. And when I look at, I look at Yens, some of Yens, and I look at young whippersnappers, don't know nothing and ain't going to listen. I come down because my son was flipped to die by five white cops from Wilkinsburg. And when I heard on the radio, on the TV, I mean, on this station, where there was a mother speaking the same thing that I was saying, her son, they was tasing and he was begging for his life. That's like my son was and I'm still going to always come down and tell you, remind you, he was a human being.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jody McLaughlin. I am a former member of the North, a resident of the North Side. I currently reside in Westview, Pennsylvania, where I work with a food pantry that distributes a significant portion of our food each week to members of the North Side who, they ride the bus up to us because it's easy access and we're happy to serve them because we know that they need the food. I am also a member of the Food Justice Fund. As my colleague Joanna has previously mentioned, there is a crossover between affordable housing and food insecurity, not just in Pittsburgh, and the two are very much intertwined. When I think of the Food Justice Fund, which I am in favor of, I think of opportunities that could happen between existing city projects and things such as the land bank where we can work regarding vacant lands that can be used specifically for urban gardens if they're needed in those communities, as well as vacant buildings being converted into local businesses or creating nonprofit organizations where kids can learn about healthy foods or families can learn about healthy foods. Land is only one piece of it. This Food Justice Fund money is needed also to ensure that the food is getting to the appropriate people, the ones who need it the most. And there is a need for expertise regarding food systems in order to help make decisions regarding where that money is allotted during this time. The Food Justice Fund Committee has been comprised of community members that live in healthy food priority areas and we have listened to what their needs are and a lot of their needs have very much been used to put together the proposal that we submitted to council. We are focused on investing in parts of the city that have been historically disinvested and it is our goal to reinvest in them, not, but not just economically, but also from a physical health and mental well, mental well-being. You know, a lot of focus has been put on urban gardens and farms and, you know, certain communities are going to have unique needs. Not all communities may need an urban garden or a farm. Some of them may need co-op, some of them may just need access to fresh, healthy foods. And one of the unique things about a Food Justice Fund is it creates opportunity for speaking specifically to community needs based on what they say that they need. And an example of that is making sure that we're including culturally relevant foods as we are funding projects through the Pittsburgh Food Justice Fund. I farm myself and I donate a portion of my food to the Birmingham Clinic, which serves a lot of immigrants and refugees in the Pittsburgh community. The number of refugees and immigrants is growing exponentially in our city and we need to make sure that we are taking care of them as well. In public health, you see a lot of immigrants and refugees develop American-based chronic diseases and part of that is because they adopt an American diet. They are afraid of eating foods that they are not familiar with and we need to make sure that we're providing the foods that help them keep healthy long-term. So I thank you very much for this opportunity and I thank you, Council, for keeping us going this far regarding the Food Justice Fund and I hope that you include it in the budget today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we will now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban, Chair of Human Resources.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1079, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Interchange Group LLC to Provide Strategic Planning and Training to the Commission. This legislation authorizes the encumbrance for one year in an amount not to exceed $20,000.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1080, Resolution Authorizing the City to Enter Into a Cooperation Agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to Serve as Co-Applicant for the Purposes of Filing an Application with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Fiscal Year 2022 Choice Neighborhoods Initiative Grant, any amount of $50 million, and pledging city financial support, any amount of $31,275,000 for the project and city-owned land to effectuate the purposes of the Bedford Dwellings Hill District Neighborhood Transformation Plan and its Implementation Strategy.
Thank you, Councilman. Do you have a motion to waive rule?
Motion to waive Rule 8 so this can appear on our Standing Committee agenda later today?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bill appear on today's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Wilson.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have three communications. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Council President Councilman presents Bill Number 1085, Resolution Requiring a Plan for the Use of Funds for the Food Justice Program Before Said Funds Are Released to the Food Justice Fund. Bill 1081, Communication from City Controller Michael Lamb Submitting a Special Report on the City of Pittsburgh Service Worker Prevailing Wage Ordinance, dated December 2022. Bill Number 1082, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on Behalf of the Department of Public Works for Edward Cox and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for Brandon Birch per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June 2018. And Bill Number 1084, Communication from Greg Fishroom, Executive Director of the URA of Pittsburgh Submitting a Position and Salary Report as of December 2022.
Can I, clarification, the one is a resolution regarding the Food Justice Program and I need a motion to waive the rules of council for that bill? So appear on today's Standing Committee agenda.
Motion to waive rules on 1085, Madam President.
Okay, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bill appear on today's Standing Committee agenda. And for the next three communications, can I have a motion to read, receive, and file, Councilman?
So moved.
Thank you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's passed. Now we'll move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business before City Council? Seeing none? The next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. You have a lot.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1074, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for December 14, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 939, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal, Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 245 Earned Income Tax, Section 245.03 Declaration and Payment of Tax as Subsection D so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent earned income tax for the year 2023. Bill Number 940, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal, Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 246 Home Rule Tax, Section 246.03 Declaration and Payment of Tax as Subsection D so as to fix the rate of interest on delinquent home rule tax for the year 2023. Bill 941, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal, Article IX Property Taxes, Chapter 263 Real Property Tax and Exemptions, Sections 263.02 Payment Options, Discount and Delinquency Penalty so as to set the payment discount and delinquent dates for the 2023 fiscal year. Bill 942, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II Fiscal, Article IX Property Taxes, Chapter 263 Real Property Tax and Exemption by fixing the rate of real estate taxation for 2023. Bill 943, Resolution Authorizing All City Departments in Conjunction with the Department of Finance to Enter on Behalf to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Facilities Usage Agreement or Agreements during the 2023 calendar year for the Purpose of Permitting Groups to Rent City-Owned Facilities for Recreational and Community-Focused Activities in Individual amounts not to exceed $10,000. Bill 944, Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2023 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code. Bill 945, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to Participate in Applicable Cooperative Purchasing Agreements for Goods, Materials, Equipment, Supplies, Services, or Construction as Authorized by the Commonwealth Procurement Code and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law for the 2023 fiscal year. Bill 946, Resolution Providing for the Letting of Contracts or for the Use of Existing Contracts for the Purchase of Material, Supplies, and Equipment for City Departments in the Maintenance, Repair, Rental, and/or Leasing, Rehabilitation, Renovation, Inspection, or Servicing of City Buildings and Facilities, and for any miscellaneous services in and for any City Departments and providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof for the 2023 fiscal year. Bill 947, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and a 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program. Bill 948, Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public Business of the City of Pittsburgh and For Meeting the Debt Charges Thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2023. Bill 949, Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City of Pittsburgh for the 2023 Fiscal Year and the Rate of Compensation Thereof in Setting Maximum Levels for Designated Positions. Bill 950, Resolution Authorizing City Council to Approve Intra-Departmental Transfers Throughout the 2023 Fiscal Year. Bill 951, Resolution Amending Resolution 410 of 2022, which Reappropriated Federal American Rescue Plan Funding by Updating the Approved Projects as Outlined in Exhibit A, Version 4. Bill 952, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article V Special Funds, Chapter 237 Stop the Violence Fund, 23703, Uses and Restrictions of the Stop the Violence Fund by Changing the Annual Percentage Budgeted for Outside Community-Based, Non-Governmental Organizations. Bill 953, Resolution Authorizing Appropriations and Salaries of the Stop the Violence Fund for the 2023 Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2023. Bill 954, Resolution Authorizing Appropriation Salaries and Capital Expenditures of the Parks Trust Fund for the 2023 Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2023. Bill 1013, (cough) excuse me, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution Number 318 of 2018, Effective Date May 14, 2018, in Order to Rescind the Sale. Bill 1065, Resolution Authorizing an Interdepartmental Transfer in the Amount of $264,805.53 from the bureaus of Administration and Animal Care and Control and the Department of Public Safety to the Bureau of Police. This transfer is necessary to assist the Bureau of Police with sufficient funding for necessary body armor replacement.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President.
Councilwoman Lavelle.
There are a number of amendments that are before members. These are also the amendments that were read for the public on Saturday. So I would like a motion to, I'm hoping we can take them all together. So a motion to way, to amend Bills 947, 948, 949, 953, and 954.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Do we have a? Do we vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, thank you. And now for the rest of the, the remainder of the bills. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills and read the amendments. Is there any discussion on the bills, amended bills? Seeing none? Bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passers vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. So, thank you, everyone, for your work on this. I feel like applauding. Thank you, everyone. And Councilman Kraus, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1075, Reported a Committee on Public Safety Services for December 14, 2022 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 629, Resolution Establishing the Pittsburgh Strong Communities Initiative in Advisory Committee.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none? The bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage. Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1076, Reported a Committee on Public Works for December 14, 2022 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 959, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Construction Phase of the Sylvan Avenue Multimodal Path Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $1 Million. This Resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at no cost to the City of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 989, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with CSXT for Engineering Work on the Fraser Street-Swinburne Bridge Replacement Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $20,020. Bill 1036, Resolution Authorizing the Director of Public Works and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with Duquesne Light Company Accepting a Minimum Annual Electricity Usage Requirement in Return for DLC to Install a Power Line from the Street to the Environmental Services Lot to Supply Power to the New EV Charging Infrastructure to Charge Electric Refuge Trucks.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final passage. All in favor of the, all in final action, all in favor of the passage. Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Urban Recreation.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1077, Reported a Committee on Urban Recreation for December 14, 2022 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1035, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Parks and Recreation to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an Agreement or Agreements with Keys Service Corps with regard to the 2022 AmeriCorps Summer Program. Said Agreement or Agreement involves the matching of funds and shall be at a cost to the City not to exceed $12,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage. Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have, the bill having received the legally required number of vote is finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilwoman.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1078, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for December 14, 2022 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1037, Resolution Adopting a Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Environmental Charter School Project, which will involve the development of an environmental charter school with associated amenities. The site address is 6545 Hamilton Avenue in the 8th Ward. Bill 1038, Resolution Amending Resolution 219 of 2013, Adopting an Official Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Lower Hill Redevelopment Project in the 3rd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Lower Hill Redevelopment.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage. Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. Council's Standing Committee's meeting will be this afternoon at 1:30 p.m. Speaker registration will close at 12:30 p.m. today. There are no more council meetings for the rest of this week. Next Monday, December 26, council and the clerks' offices will be closed in observance for the Christmas holiday. Next Wednesday, December 28, at 10 a.m., council will hold our last regular meeting of 2022. Speaker registration will close at 9 a.m., Wednesday, the 28th. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council's meeting webpage. You may also call the city's clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? So I'm just going to end with just a few comments. So you know I'm not going to let this go. First of all, Happy Hanukkah to the people that celebrate Hanukkah as well. And we hope next week everyone has a Merry Christmas. I just want to say for the Food Justice Fund and some of the other things that we've been hearing, I, we know that there's a lot of people, a lot of members that focus on specific projects. But I think this was one that every member of council was supportive of. Maybe not supportive of where the money came from, where, you know, what we were doing with it, not hearing a plan. But overall, I think this council has been so, so kind and so generous in wanting to make sure that we were helping our residents of the City of Pittsburgh. So most of these things happened with a 9-0 vote. But having said that, I still think that we need to make sure that we're at least accountable to the public and that we're letting people know what we're doing with the funds and how we're allocating. But I do also want to acknowledge Shelley Danko Day, who does a tremendous amount of work and throughout the entire COVID pandemic. She did a lot to make sure people were getting fed. And if you're on the Food Justice emails, you'll see she's on there frequently sharing information. So I want to thank her and acknowledge her work, as well as all the groups that are comprised of the Food Justice Fund. And I do want to thank everyone for making sure that we got through the budget process. And I want to thank, including our Cable Bureau, our budget team, the mayor's team, OMB. I want to thank our city clerk and her amazing team, who, as you could see this morning, was running through here trying to make sure all the amendments were on the table. And they get very little recognition, but I want to make sure I thank them. I want to thank our Sergeant-at-Arms who are here for every meeting and everyone who helped us get this, these meetings. There were times we were throwing meetings at them left and right, throwing amendments at them. And our solicitor, Dan Fries, and everyone has really pulled together. So I want to thank all of them, including our solicitor upstairs. And I want to, later, next week, we'll make sure we give a moment of silence for our city solicitor, Karisha Kubiak, who lost her mother this past week. Anything else from members? Okay, there you go. Have a motion to approve the amendments and adjourn the meetings.
They're moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a second?
We have it.
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.